Please take your respective seats. We will be starting in 5 minutes. Back then. Suspended na lang so pagka invocation na lang, uga'wa kasi 'yan. For the roll back, just for record. Ngayon? Na disconnect? Ay gusto na nilang ano, ipa'y pababai na lahat dito magatend na physical. Kimi tek na ba? Ayuna? Okay na ba 'yan? The suspended se- we yesterday we suspended the session so we will start with the invocation. May we call on Saik, member of parliament Ibrahim Ali to lead the invocation please.
Assalamu alaikum rabbil alamin. Alhamdulillahi rabbil alamin ar rahmanu rohim walik amiddin. Iya kana'budu wa iya kana'stain. Ihdinas serat al mustaqin. Serat al ladina an'amta alaihi. Gairin ma'udub alaihim aladzholin amin. Allahumma feqna'alla lima tuhibbu tarra'da. Allahumma fequla ta'umurina. Wa idung dinasriqalita'harri bila dinaya Allah. Walina gahhiha dih hukuma allatiin aknu. Alaiha illaum. Allahumma magial ikkima'anah, ikkima'an marhumah. Wataparukka namim ba'dih, taparukka ma'sumah ya Allah. Allahumma aslahla na dinana alladzi huasma ta'umrina. Waslahla na dunyana alladzi piha ma'ashuna. Waslahla na akhara'tana alladzi hilayma dunaya Allah. Allahumma ahinab illaiman wa amitna'ab illaiman. Allahumma rabbana atina'abid dunya hasana. Abil akhara'ta hasana tawakina adha gannar. Sallallahu ala siddina Muhammad. Wa ala alihi wasahbihi wasalam di rahmatika ya arhamar rahimin. Walhamdulillahi rabbil alamin.
May I direct the secretary general to please call the roll not for the purpose of determining a quorum but for just, just for record purposes.
The honorable Abbas Ahmad. Abbas Harun. Abbas Yurkaney. Abbas Basit Sharif. Abu Mujib. Adiyon Jaor Rahman Alontoh. Ahangat Duma. Alaniya Liza. Alau Den Faiz. Ali Ibrahim. Ali Lanang Junior. Ali Edi Mapad. Alil Caesar. Ambolutos Warto. Ampatuan Baytan. Anayati Susana. Ismail Muslimah. Balidong Ali Pangalian. Barahamid Aminuddin. Basman Anna Tarhata. Batom Muhammad Jailuddin. Burahir Abraham. Kandaw Bai Maleha. Dan Damun Latif Ma'isara. Diamla Musa. Dipatuan Saprullah. Ibrahim Ahud. Ismail Haji Abdulaziz. Gayak Abdullah. Gera Edward. Hasyim Abdullah. Hasan Hatimil. Iqbal Mua'Gher. Ismail Rasul. Jajuri Raisa. Jakilan Muslimin. Karun Bainon. Lidasan Muslini. Loong Don Mustafa. Lorena Jose Iribani. Makaku Abdurrahuf. Makapaar Abdullah. Makaraya Jamil. Makasalu Marjani. Manguda Datu Datu Kadave. Mantawil Malik. Mastura Datu Tokau. Mastura Siti Syahara. Mualil Amil Bahar. Mittimbang Datu Mittbantau. Mitmog Rasul. Mujahid Abdul Mohmin. Munyos Hussein. Oranon Sway. Pakasam Obaida. Pak Abdullah Habb. Pangandaman Nabila Margarita. Ramos Jamila. Rimbang Edris Anaser. Sakar Mudayaw. Salendat Said. Sally Alshay. Saliga Romeo. Salik Ali. Sangki Ali. Sunny Punduma. Satar Alzad. Semao Maria Ser. Semaronyo. Sheikh Said. Silongan Aida. Sulaiman Ali. Tagu Paisalin. Tan Nabil. Udsia Sahi. Ulama Milanyo. Ismaan Asfar. Yakob Muhammad. Uek Narciso.
Thank you. Secretary General.
Mr. Speaker. For record purposes, we have a total of 58 honorable members of the parliament in attendance in this today's resumption of session number 51. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. That was for record purposes only. The quorum has been predetermined because it's a suspended continuation of the session yesterday. Just a gentle reminder before I call on the majority leader, I would appeal to everyone, I recognize the right of everyone to speak, but I also appeal that you limit the time that you want to speak be direct and concise and so that in the exercise of your right to speak you don't antagonize others' rights. So that's just a gentle reminder. I know all of us here are gentlemen. So thank you very much, Majority Leader.
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended for one minute?
Thank you for participating in today's session. We will now move on to our next topic.
Number 53 is ongoing reproductions. May we proceed first to Committee Report Number 54?
Fifty-four.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
Before that, Mr. Speaker...
Committee Report 54 speaks of amendments of the rules.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. May we respectfully first recognize MP Raisa Jajuri to be the Majority Leader.
I am having a hard time hearing. Please speak louder.
Mr. Speaker, may we respectfully recognize MP Raisa Jajuri to take as the Majority Leader because I will read the Committee Report, Mr. Speaker.
Deputy Majority Leader Raisa Jajuri is hereby recognized to be the acting Majority?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We are now on Committee Report Number 54 and may we request, Mr. Speaker, that the Majority Floor Leader as Chair of the Committee on Rules be recognized, Mr. Speaker.
The Majority Leader who is on temporary leave to present the Committee Report, to be able to present the Committee Report hereby recognized?
Yes, Bismillahirohmanirohim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh, Mr. Speaker. The Committee on Rules has the honor to report to the PTA Parliament in hereby recommends the approval and adoption of the proposed resolution. Proposed Resolution Number 379 entitled Resolution Approving the Amendments on Rule 7, Section 3, Paragraph 1 and Section 4, Paragraph 2 made by the Committee on Rules on the Parliamentary Rules, Procedures and Practices of the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority, Parliament of the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim in the Now, respectively. The Committee on Rules are considering the amendments stated under tweet. In Rule 7, Section 3, Paragraph Number 1 on Jurisdiction of Committee on Finance, Budget and Management to read as follows. Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management shall have 31 members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to finance, preparation and management of budget and appropriation of funds for the operations of the Bangsa-Moro Government, including its expenditures, payment to public indebtedness, claims against the Bangsa-Moro Government, intergovernmental revenue sharing, and in general, all matters relating to public expenditures. The work of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management includes the scrutiny of the internal budget of the Bangsa-Moro Government, its budget preparation, submission, approval and execution. In Rule 7, Section 4, Paragraph Number 2 on Jurisdictions of Committee and Accounts and Audit which shall be read as follows. Committee and Accounts, the amendments shall be Committee and Accounts. The audit was deleted. The Committee and Accounts shall have 17 members. It shall have jurisdiction over all matters relating to the income, revenues, expenditures and other activities of the Bangsa-Moro Parliament. We appeal to the members of the PTA Parliament to immediately approve and adopt this proposed resolutions. Mr. Speaker.
There is now, you have heard the reading by the Majority Leader of the Committee Report 54 on the approval of the amended PTA Parliamentary Rules, Procedures and Practices for PTA Parliament. There is a motion to adopt and approve the Committee Report. Is there any second?
Second motion?
It is duly seconded. Is there any objection? The newly minted Deputy Majority Leader is...
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Wait a minute. Acting Majority, send a little. The Acting Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. May we recognize MP Paisalintago?
MP Paisalintago, the newly elected Deputy Majority Leader is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. With your respect to my two superior in the Bangsa-Moro Parliament, the Deputy Speaker and the Majority Floor Leader, Mr. Speaker. We should adopt muna before we approve the Committee Report. If we approve the adoption, then afterwards, if there is no amendment, we approve the Committee Report. That's my...
That is...
Manifestation, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. That's duly noted. Actually, it will only be adopted and approved for deliberation. That's the intention.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? There being none, the Committee Report Number 54 is hereby adopted and approved for deliberation.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the opening of the period of interpolation and debate.
There is now a motion to move for the opening of the period of interpolation. Any second? Duly seconded and therefore, we now open the period of interpolation.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize MP Mawalil?
May I recognize the young gentleman, MP Amir Mawalil?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a few clarification questions on the...
Speak louder, please.
On the resolution, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would like to ask on the definition of the... on the provision of the Committee and the definition of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, on what is the definition of the Bangsa-Moro Government in this context, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The definition of the Bangsa-Moro Government refers to the executive authority of the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority, Mr. Speaker.
So, in essence, Mr. Speaker, the Bangsa-Moro Government in this context, Mr. Speaker, does not include the Bangsa-Moro Parliament. Am I right, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The budget of the Bangsa-Moro Parliament shall be deliberated by the Bangsa-Moro, by the Committee on Accounts, Mr. Speaker, to be submitted to the Ministry of Finance and Budgetment, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I am inclined to know, I'm curious if the word Bangsa-Moro Government was used in the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law? And if so, what is the definition of the Bangsa-Moro Government in the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. In the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law, there are several mentions of the Bangsa-Moro Government. This is referring to the Bangsa-Moro regular government. And there is the Bangsa-Moro Government during transition period is the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority, Mr. Speaker. The Parliamentary Rules Procedures of the PTA Parliament, we intend to use this not only during the transition period as far as long as it can be used in the regular Bangsa-Moro. But still, this is a Parliamentary Rules and Procedures, Mr. Speaker, meaning it can be subject to amendments at any time because Parliamentary Rules Procedures is evolving and developing, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, thank you for that response. I do not object the resolution. I just wanted to make it clear because the very point of this revision or the amendments of the rules is because it was not clear for some members of Parliament the functions and duties of the Committees and Accounts and Audit, as well as the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management. So, is the... Can there be a language that can finally fix this? Because for me, the Bangsa-Moro Government, in this case, the use in the definition of the Committee on Budget, Finance and Management is not yet clear for me.
Yes. If the Honorable Gentleman MP Mawal from Sulu would like to propose an amendment to refer it to the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority, it would be acceptable on this proponent of this proposed resolution, Mr. Speaker. I'm waiting for the amendments, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I have one more question, but I reserve my right to ask after the turn of my colleagues.
Thank you, MP Amir. You may consider proposing directly an amendment later instead of just clarificatory questions so that we can expedite the process.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize MP Adyong. Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize MP Adyong.
MP, the Deputy Speaker, Ziaul Rahman Adyong is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just simple clarificatory questions. Mr. Speaker, according to the Committee Report submitted, the list of members for the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, as well as the Committee on Accounts, are 31 for the Finance and 17 for the Committee on Accounts. These are the regular members. I'd like to ask, Mr. Speaker, if the basis for determining the number also includes the ex-official members, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the determination of numbers does not include the ex-official. But they are... they have the power to vote. According to the rules, they have the power to vote as a regular member, but they are not included in the determination of the numbers of 31.
I did not hear it clearly.
Meaning if 31 plus the ex-official members, Mr. Speaker?
The 31 does not include the...
Ex-official members.
So, but their signature are also needed in order to approve a measure that is being discussed or has been discussed by the Committee. Am I correct, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Their signatures are included in the...
So, meaning to say, Mr. Speaker, their approval or disapproval of any measure have a bearing on the finalization of the Committee Report? Am I correct?
Mr. Speaker, the numbers, for as long as the majority members are reached in every Committee Report, it is not necessary that their signatures will be included. But for purposes of arriving a majority members, it will be much helpful, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Now, I'd like to ask the proponent, Mr. Speaker, since there is an additional... there are actually, Mr. Speaker, some additional Deputy Speakers, I think three Deputy Speakers. May I ask the Majority Leader if there are also need to adjust the number of signatories to reflect the ex-official members to include the additional elected Deputy Speakers, Mr. Speaker? In order to arrive, in order to arrive, Mr. Speaker, the legitimacy, as he mentioned, of each measure that is being discussed or has been discussed by each Committee, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I'm much very welcome if the names of the Deputy Speaker be included in the list of the signatures. That would be an incoming Committee Report, Mr. Speaker.
So, I presume, Mr. Speaker, that with that response, there is also a need to amend the rules insofar as the number of officers of this Parliament. Am I correct, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, based on our research by MP Deputy Speaker, Attorney Omar Sema, and we already reached an agreement with the Speaker, the House Rules of the House of Representatives, as well as the Senate, let's say, let's take as an example the House of Representatives, they are more than so much numbers of Deputy Speakers, but until today, they did not amend the particular rules on Deputy Speakers.
Yeah, but I believe, Mr. Speaker, we are not bound to follow the Congress, Mr. Speaker. We can have our own rules here, but...
Yes, we can do that, Mr. Speaker, in the future amendments of the Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
I'm very much welcome.
Thank you.
The Deputy Speaker, Zia Adyong, we thank you, but the Chair would like to make the observation relevant to your comment, that there is a need to amend the rules. There's no need to amend the rules, because the rules need not prohibit the national election of Deputy Speakers. It merely says, it's mentioned, a Deputy Speaker, so it can be more than one Deputy. So, thank you very much, Deputy Zia. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize MP Jose Lorena.
The gentleman from Tapol, Sulu, my BFF, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, esteemed Majority Leader, and thank you, my brother Deputy Speaker and Speaker for the Day, MP Nabil Tan. My issue on the matter is really on the... related to the questioning of MP, my brother, MP Mawalil. I cannot stand to accept that the Executive is the only government of the Bangsa-Moro, because there is only one government for the entire Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanao. If it is only the Executive, then what is the Parliament doing here if it is not part of the Bangsa-Moro Government? That is the first question, which is a premise to another question.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. If we refer to the discussion in the Committee on Rules, as well as in the previous sessions, there is a confusion on the jurisdiction of the two Committees, Finance, Budget, and Management and the Committees on Accounts and Audit. Mr. Speaker, the intention of the Committee on Rules in discussion this matter is that the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management is the committee of jurisdiction. It matters with preparation of the budget of the entire Bangsa-Moro, and in discussion of the entire Bangsa-Moro Government, including the Bangsa-Moro different ministers and offices and agencies, including the Office of the Chief Minister. If the Honorable MPs would like to change this as the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority, I will be welcome that, Mr. Speaker. But besides the point in changing the BTA into the Bangsa-Moro Government is to avoid confusion what is... who is referring with the BTA in that matter, Mr. Speaker. But I am again opening for any amendment on this particular matter.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Then my question is, who prepares the appropriation for both the Executive and the Legislative? While admittedly, initially, the Committee on Accounts will have the first crack on the expenditures of the Parliament?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
But the appropriation must be passed by the Finance Committee for endorsement to the Parliament?
So, I would like to speak in Tagalog, Mr. Speaker. Ang practice, ang gagawin po natin, for example, meron tayong budget call. Ang budget call na ito, pinamumunuan muna ng Ministry of Finance, Budget, and Management. Then, habang ginagawa nila yun, ang Committee on Accounts, ay gagawin naman ang preparation, magkakaroon ng Committee Meetings dun sa Parliament, para makaaray po ng budget para sa Bangsa-Moro Parliament. Itong budget na ito naaray ng Committee on Accounts, ay sasubmitito dun sa Committee on... dun sa Ministry of Finance and Budget Management, para mabalance nila 'yung budget ng different agencies, ministries, including the Office of the Chief Minister and the Bangsa-Moro Parliament, para makita nila 'yung total value ng Black Grant, kung paano ito iarrange ng maganda. But again, ang Committee... ang Ministry of Finance ay hindi po pwedeng magadjust 'yung ginawa ng budget para sa Parliament. So, pagkatapos nun, ay ifile nas at sa Parliament, at ito ay mapupunta sa Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, presumably, dandun na po 'yung budget na Parliament dun sa appropriation na finail ng Bangsa Government of the Day dun sa Parliament. So, pag nagfile na sila ng appropriation, included na yun sa Government of the Day, lahat ng ministries, offices, and agencies, plus 'yung budget ng Parliament na ginawa ng Committee on Accounts. Siyentang intention din, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you. I would just like to bring into the attention the fact that the Black Grant...
May the Chair sue for a suspension for three minutes. Majority Leader?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. After a brief consultation, I would end the explanation that there is only one government, the Bangsa-Moro Government in the regular, in the BTA in general, which include Executive and Legislative Authorities. Then I would yield already, and I would yield to the recommendation that we just stick to the definition of Bangsa-Moro Government, as is defined in the Administrative Code, which is only one. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Which includes the Parliament?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. MP Deputy Minister Joel Lorena, who is a member of the Rules also. Majority Leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize MP Baitan Ampatuan.
Before I recognize, give the floor to the Deputy Minority Leader. May I just appeal to everyone? If your question or clarificatory question can be answered in the period of amendments, or we can just cure your question in the period of amendments, then we just leave it that, and then just stand up during the period of amendments, if it is possible. But I'm not curtailing your right to speak. I now recognize the Deputy Minority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On Number 2, which is the jurisdiction of Committee on Accounts and Audit, it states here that the original name of the Committee is Committee on Accounts and Audit. In the proposed amendment, we already removed the word "audit." Mr. Speaker, I know there was a lengthy discussion about this, but, Mr. Speaker, I think we should clarify this, because when we say "audit," based on the premise of... because we're talking about here of our own rules, Mr. Speaker. We're not talking about the Commission of Audit as an external auditing body for the Bangsa-Moro Government, Mr. Speaker. In that case, if we remove the word "audit," Mr. Speaker, who will do the accounting or review of the expenditure of the Parliament and the performance review of the Parliament, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. First, Mr. Speaker, in the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law, there is a Bangsa-Moro Internal Auditing Office, and I believe it is already included in the Bangsa-Moro Administrative Code. And, Mr. Speaker, in every offices, ministries, agencies, there is a auditing department in the offices to audit the particular activities, funds, and expenditures of each particular ministry, including, Mr. Speaker, the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority Parliament, Mr. Speaker. And who will be... who will check the budget of the Parliament if in case we are preparing the budget for the BTA Parliament? Again, the Committee on Accounts may review the budget of the previous year and compare it to the proposed budget for the incoming year, so that if there is an improvement or enhancement of a particular proposed budget submitted by the Office of the Speaker, who will prepare the budget. Ay, dun po makikita, no? Hindi po ito for purposes of... 'yung ginagawa po ng preparation of budget ay hindi po for purposes of checking kung sino 'yung... kung ano 'yung may nawala, ganyan. Pero ito po for purposes of preparing the incoming budget for the Bangsa-Moro Parliament. Again, Mr. Speaker, hindi... pag sinabi kasing "audit," ay napaka tulad ng deliberation natin previously in the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law. In this Philippine jurisdiction, the Supreme Office, the Commission to Audit Every Government Agencies is the Committee... is the Commission on Audit. Napaka protective nila sa kanilang internal... sa kanilang powers as guaranteed in the Constitution. But nevertheless, every offices ay merong auditing office dun sa part ng office nila para dun sa pagaudit nila dun sa proposed budget na 'yan. Hindi po 'yan mawawala. Pag tinignan natin ng structures ng Bangsa-Moro Parliament, ay meron ding audit office dun sa structures na 'yan, Mr. Speaker. Internal auditing na 'yan, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, as a follow-up to that concern, Mr. Speaker, are we saying that this is actually a Committee, Committee of the Parliament, Mr. Speaker? And we're not talking about the internal auditing that is a regular, supposedly, activities of an organization, Mr. Speaker? What we're talking about here is the rules and regulations of the Parliament that includes the Committee on Accounts, Mr. Speaker? In this case, Mr. Speaker, if we are confining... In this case, Mr. Speaker, if we are confining the mandate or the functions of the Committee on Accounts and Audit just for the preparation of the budget of the Parliament, Mr. Speaker, are we saying that this committee is inferior in nature compared to the other committees, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, if we read the... whereas clauses of the resolution, the main purpose or objective of this resolution is to avoid confusion on the jurisdiction of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management and the Committee on Accounts. As per agreement with the Committee on Rules, Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Accounts jurisdiction is over the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament. Considering that this Parliament, Mr. Speaker, we have so much 1,200-plus employees and add the moes and capital outlays, so kailangan po na madeliberate po ito sa napakalaking opisina ito ng Committee on Accounts. Whereas ang Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management ay nakapokus po sila dun sa mga budget ng other ministries, agencies, including the offices in the Bangsa Moro Parliament. So ito po 'yung purpose ito. In the previous session natin, nagkakaroon ng confusion dito sa provision na ito. Pangalawa, isa sa confusion na ginamot ng itong resolution na ito, Mr. Speaker, is 'yung "audit," no? Pag binasa po natin 'yung Committee on Accounts and Audit, sabi po ng ibang kasamahan natin dito, Mr. Speaker, ikaw 'yung nagprepare ng budget at ikaw 'yung nag-audit din dun sa prepremong budget. 'Yun po 'yung confusion na sinasabi natin na dapat ma-cure dito sa proposed resolution na ito, at saka magkakaroon po ng conflict of interest 'yung situation na ikaw 'yung nagprepare at ikaw rin 'yung mag-audit sa sarili mo. 'Yun po 'yung iniwasan natin dito at ma-cure nitong proposed resolution na ito, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, actually, Mr. Speaker, I have a reservation on it, Mr. Speaker, the removing of the word "audit," Mr. Speaker, because that is very crucial, Mr. Speaker. The reason why I think it was copied... this specific committee's style was copied from other countries' practices, Mr. Speaker, is that's a very big reason why we... there is a word "audit" there. Because while the committee prepares... because actually in the real sense, Mr. Speaker, it's not the committee that prepares the budget. It's the finance office of the BTA Parliament that prepares the budget, Mr. Speaker. But what the Committee on Accounts and Audit does is to review, is to check if the proposal is within the priorities of the government or the Bangsa Moro or the Parliament, in that case, Mr. Speaker. And it is but proper to audit, to review at the end of the year what had happened to the proposal that was acted upon by the Committee on Accounts and Audit, Mr. Speaker. I think there's no confusion on that, Mr. Speaker, that the one preparing the budget is the one auditing it, Mr. Speaker. It's not that done that way, Mr. Speaker. I think we should be clear on this. The reason why I pointed out this, Mr. Speaker, is for us, for all of us to be on the same page about this specific provision, Mr. Speaker. We should have a common understanding why we put... why we not put this specific word "audit," Mr. Speaker, in the Committee on Accounts and Audit, Mr. Speaker. And my recommendation really, Mr. Speaker, is to retain the word "audit." My other concern, Mr. Speaker, is that while we confine the functions of the Committee on Accounts and Audit to the BTA Parliament, Mr. Speaker, who will then... who will then check the ministries and offices, which was actually originally part of the functions of the Committee on Accounts and Audit in the original rules, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I will... gagamitin ko po 'yung argument ni Deputy Speaker Omar Semat during the deliberation of the Committee on Rules. The Committee on Accounts, when it deliberate the expenditures of the Bangsa Moro Parliament, technically, they are reviewing the expenditures of the Bangsa Moro Parliament from the previous years and then 'yung proposed budget for the incoming years. In that sense, Mr. Speaker, ay parana rin nilang ina-audit 'yung mga gastusin na nagamit ng previous years and 'yung incoming years. That's a parana 'yung, Mr. Speaker, nakikita nila at makokumpere nila 'yung mga figures and numbers dun sa proposed budget compared dun sa previous budget. 'Yun po 'yung powers ng Committee on Accounts, at 'yan ay kasama sa gagawin nila dun sa preparation ng budget ng Bangsa Moro Parliament. Kahit hindi na po nating ilagay, 'yung word na "audit," ay ganun po rin ang gagawin nila, kasi malinaw po ginamit 'yan sa proposed resolution na 'yan na expenditures. How the Bangsa Moro Parliament use the funds ngayong year na'to and compare sa susunod na year na'yan, ay 'yun ang gagawin ng Committee on Accounts. At 'yan ay kasama sa kanilang reviewing power, even without treating... writing the audit, ay kasama rin 'yun sa gagawin nila. Kasi pag sinabi natin, Mr. Speaker, na "audit," ay parang ang dating 'yan ay you are investigating something dun sa previous budget. So para ma-abide po 'yung confusion dito, Mr. Speaker, at maliwanag po sa atin lahat ng jurisdiction ng dalawang committee na ito, ay nagkaroon po tayo ng proposed resolution na ito, Mr. Speaker, sa incoming discussion and deliberations natin. Mr. Speaker, 'yung mga previous hearing natin sa budget ay wala pa po... wala pong Committee on Accounts, at ito ay nadidevelop natin habang tumatagal 'yung procedures na ito. At Inshallah, Mr. Speaker, darating ang time na maganda na po 'yung flow ng deliberation ng budget natin sa Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Actually, I fully agree with the explanation of the Majority Floor Leader, only that the use of "audit" word, we have a fear on the use of the "audit" word. But based on the explanation of the Majority Floor Leader, we are actually doing it. We're actually doing it, only that we don't want to appear the word "audit." But in real terms, we're doing the "audit," Mr. Speaker. And in that case, Mr. Speaker, my proposal later on is to retain the word "audit," Mr. Speaker. But my second concern was not answered, Mr. Speaker, regarding the ministries and offices, who will review their performance, Mr. Speaker? Because we know that Committee on Accounts and Audit is a parliamentary committee, Mr. Speaker, which is bound to review not only the Bangsa Moro Parliament's budget, Mr. Speaker, but budget, Mr. Speaker, but including all the ministries and offices. It's actually for the entire Bangsa Moro Government, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, if we look the other committees on the Committee on... the parliamentary committee, there are committees who will investigate any anomalies in the government spending of funds, Mr. Speaker. For example, we have the Committee on Blue Ribbon Committee that would investigate the... Blue Ribbon Committee that will investigate any anomalies or misuse of funds in the Bangsa Moro Government. And this Blue Ribbon Committee, Mr. Speaker, is one of the powerful committee. And also as an oversight function of the Parliament, they can investigate how the Bangsa Moro Government spend their budget, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. I take on the part of the chair, based on the exchanges, I guess the woman Deputy Minority Leader, Bayutan, fully understand the explanation of the Majority Leader. She just want that the "audit" word be retained. The "audit" word sometimes strikes fear in a layman's view because it may connote misuse of funds. But actually, in generic term, in generic term, "audit" means review, review of the expenses. It's not really digging into anomalies. So if there is no violent objection, maybe there can be some modus vivendi or compromise on how best to resolve this so that we can move on.
But nevertheless, Mr. Speaker, if the good MPs have a proposed amendment, we can discuss it.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, in due time, Mr. Speaker. I have a proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, because based on the explanation of the Majority Floor Leader, the Committee on Accounts has the jurisdiction over the preparation of the budget of the Bangsa Moro Parliament, which is not part of the revision that was made, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Madam Bayutan. The Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the Minority Floor Leader and Liza Alamiya.
Thank you very much.
The long-awaited return of the Jedi, of the Minority Leader, who has been on Zoom since we started the lockdown. Welcome back and please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, the Deputy Majority Floor Leader. This is a clarification, and I would ask questions to help facilitate the understanding of what accounts and audit mean, as well as the finance, budget, and management, and what are the functions of these two committees. May I ask the proponent, the good Majority Floor Leader, in the case of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, is its role similar to the role of the Public Accounts Committee that is found in other parliaments around the world? And the function of the Public Accounts Committee is actually to do an audit, not in the technical term? The word "audit" means to review or scrutinize. And so the Public Accounts Committee audits, reviews, scrutinizes the COA reports or the performance reports of different agencies. Is it... does the Committee on Budget, Finance, and Management have the same function as a Public Accounts Committee?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the jurisdiction of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management is to trigger the budget preparations of the entire Bangsa Moro Government, starting from the budget call, deliberation from the submission of the every ministries to the budget proposals that will be the basis for the bill to be filed by the government of the day for the budget of the entire Bangsa Moro Government, including the Bangsa Moro Parliament, the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament. Para po 'yang... parang appropriation committee na magde-discuss dun sa budget, sa Senate at saka sa House of Representatives, ay may appropriation committee na sila 'yung magprepare ng mga budget, at tatawag po ng every line agencies to defend their budget para naman na-include dun sa General Appropriation Act ng National Government. Ganun din po 'yung essence dito sa Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. Itong committee na ito ay siya rin magprepare po ng budget para sa susunod na Bangsa Moro Appropriation Act. 'Yung po ang trabaho ng Commission... ng Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. Whereas 'yung Committee on Accounts...
May I cut you short there, Mr. Speaker, Deputy Majority Floor Leader. Let's focus on the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management muna. So what we're seeing is, the interpretation is that the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management only triggers and prepares, no? Triggers the preparation of the budget of every institution, including the Parliament in the Bangsa Moro Government.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the powers of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, pag natapos muna po 'yung proposed budget ng Ministry of Finance and Budget and Management, of course, ito may file sila ng appropriation bill sa Parliament. Ito po ay marirefer po sa Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management for deliberation dito sa Parliament. So magkakaroon po ng base sa ating practice at ginawan na po natin ito for two consecutive years, ay magkacluster-cluster itong Committee on Finance sa different ministries para magkaroon sila ng committee hearing dun sa mga ministries na nafofold dun sa bawat cluster na 'yun. So pag naka-arrive na sila sa figures, at 'yun na po kapubahan ng Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, and to be submitted to the plenary for approval.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader, Mr. Speaker. In that case, Mr. Speaker, when the Committee on Budget, Finance, and Management performs its tasks of not just triggering the preparation of the budget, but also filing the appropriations bill and conducting the budget hearings, does its function include the scrutiny of the performance of the agencies in the disbursement and utilization of funds that were previously appropriated in the prior years? Kasama ba sa function ng Committee on Budget, Finance, and Management, 'yung pag-scrutinize, pag-review sa performance ng mga agencies, including the Parliament, sa previous budget na appropriate, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the powers of the... for example, the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management has been clustered into different subcommittees. The subcommittees will review, scrutinize the performance of the certain agency or ministry, comparing the budget for the previous years and the incoming years, so that based on the experience, they can propose an increase if there is necessary to increase the budget to perform the necessary functions of the ministry, Mr. Speaker. If they can see na hindi naman masyado successful 'yung proposed programs ng ministry na 'yun, ay pwede rin nilang ayusin 'yung budget ng ministry sa 'yun at para mayaayos 'yung budget ng ministry sa 'yun. 'Yun po 'yung ginagawa ng Committee on Finance and Budget and Management.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In that particular context, does the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, in the conduct of its scrutiny functions, review the performance of the agencies, how they utilize the funds individually, by the entire committee or by the subcommittees? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In that case, Mr. Speaker, then the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management is performing the same functions as a Public Accounts Committee that is found in other parliaments in other countries like the United Kingdom, Westminster, and Scotland. And so the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management is actually conducting performance audits. Performance review or scrutiny of utilization of funds, execution of the budgets, implementation of programs is part of what we call "audit," not the audit that is being conducted by an external agency such as the Commission on Audit, but a review of the performance in order to be able to come up with a proper budget, as mentioned by the Majority Floor Leader, whether to increase the budget or to decrease the budget. In that case, Mr. Speaker, my next question then, if the Committee on Budget, Finance, and Management acts like the Public Accounts Committee in other jurisdictions, the Committee on Accounts and Audit originally is a parliamentary committee created by the... through the rules, by the Committee on Rules? But the reason for removing the term "audit" is because it evokes fear if we use the term "audit." But as to the function of the Committee on Accounts, Mr. Speaker, which states here that it shall have jurisdiction over all matters relating to the income, revenues, expenditures, and other activities of the Bangsa Moro Parliament? Will review of the performance of each unit within the Parliament, the utilization of funds by the members of Parliament be part of the function of the Committee on Accounts?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the scope of the restriction of the Committee on Accounts is limited on the... is focused on the Bangsa Moro Parliament or the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority or the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority Parliament to scrutiny, review, and examine the every unit of the offices or in the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority Parliament, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, in effect, if we amend the rules of the parliament by changing the name of this particular committee and remove the word "audit", we are limiting the parliamentary functions of the Committee on Accounts to just... It's not limiting with, yes, of course, it works within the parliament, but it is limited only to the preparation of the budget of the parliament. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the budget of the parliament is prepared by the Office of the Speaker and the Office of Finance of the Speaker and all the offices and under the Office of the Speaker, and this will be reviewed, scrutinized by the Committee on Accounts, so that they can compare it to the previous budget and to the incoming year budget of the parliament, and this will be approved the Committee on Accounts, Mr. Speaker.
That is very clear then, Mr. Speaker. Considering that the Committee on Accounts will now review the submission of the Office of the Speaker and the internal finance office within the parliament to compare the budget proposal with the previous budget proposal, the approved appropriations in the previous years, that wouldn't that entail reviewing the performance of the parliament and the offices within the parliament, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, in preparation, in submission of the budget of the parliament, that is the jurisdiction of the Committee on Accounts, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, it is very clear, which means the function of the Committee on Accounts is not just to review the budget prepared by the finance office, the Office of the Speaker, but also to compare, and a comparison means a review of the performance if the indicators were achieved from the previous years, which falls within the ambit of what "audit" means. So, my last question, Mr. Speaker, considering that, what is the main justification for removing the word "audit", which pertains to a, it can be a performance audit, it's a scrutiny of the performance, scrutiny of the budget, comparison of the performance, comparison of the budget? What is the main reason why the word "audit" will be removed, considering that this is a parliamentary committee, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, if we may allow to give the brief background of this committee, Mr. Speaker. The original provisions, the audit is not limited to the Bangsa-Moro Transition Parliament, Authority Parliament, but including the offices in the other ministries, agencies, Office of the Chief Minister. Masyado pong malawak 'yung words dun na ginamit ang "audit", ang nagkakaroon po, Mr. Speaker, ng confusion dun sa issue na yon. Kasi hindi lang po, dun sa original provision, hindi lang po parliament, other agencies, ministries, and offices dito sa Bangsa-Moro. So, napagkasunduan namin with the Speaker and the ES that 'yung intention ay, 'yung Committee on Accounts ay sa Bangsa-Moro Parliament, and mayroong appropriate committee para naman dito sa Bangsa-Moro government of the day and other agencies, and para naman masyadong ma-clear 'yung situation, 'yung provision na yon. Dahil po nagkakaroon po ng confusion dun. And this provision, 'yung original provision of Committee on Accounts and Audit, Mr. Speaker, ay hindi galing po 'yan dun sa original, original, original na proposed parliamentary rules, procedures, and practices nung panahon pa po ng first Bangsa-Moro Transition Commission na proposed parliamentary rules and procedures. Nagkaroon po ng changes sa ibang committees na mga jurisdictions, so na-iwan po siya na hindi po na-amend na para magkaroon na claro na definition at jurisdiction ng Committee on Accounts and Audit. Kaya po, ngayon po, ngayon nakita na po, especially dun nangyari sa budget discussion natin, nakita natin na merong confusion na dapat ayusin dahil itong provision na ito ay hindi po na-update, hindi po na-bako dun sa original, original na proposed na... Kaya po nagkaganun po, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That means the main reason for the amendment on the provision on the Committee on Accounts is to delimit its jurisdiction to only within the parliament?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, that is very clear, Mr. Speaker, and I don't have a problem with that. But the term "audit", which pertains to a review, it can be a performance review, it can be a scrutiny, is still part of the functions of the Committee on Accounts, but only pertaining to parliament? Is there still a need to remove the word "audit"? Because the amendment, the main amendment here is on the jurisdiction of the Committee on Accounts and Audit, which has been delimited now to only the parliament? That is very clear, and that it's the Committee on Budget, Finance, and Management which now acts as the Public Accounts Committee, then is there still a need, except for aesthetic purposes, to remove the word "audit"? It's still Committee on Accounts doing auditing, review of performance, but only of the parliament? Do we still need to remove the term "audit"?
Before the Majority Floor Leader answers...
Yes, Mr. Speaker, if the Minority Floor Leader would like to propose amendments in the period of amendment, I will be welcome, Mr. Speaker.
I think, observation from the Chair, based on, again, based on the exchanges, the intention is very clear for the amendments, which is clear already to the Minority Floor Leader. And so, the only issue is the word, the use of the word "audit", which just means review performance or... So, I think whatever can be agreed here, since the intention is already clear, the intention is already clear, maybe we can have some compromise, whether to retain the word as originally mentioned or accept the Committee on Rules amendments. So, maybe one-minute suspension to arrive at common grounds. Majority Leader, can you report on what happened during the break, the suspension?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, after discussion with the Minority Floor Leader, Mr. Speaker, we will put a...
Can we have your attention, please?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, to, we will, there will be amendment in the period of amendment proposed by the...
There will be an amendment in the content, not in the title.
Not in the title.
I think that will be compromise. Majority Leader, there are hands being raised. Whom do we approve, whom do we recognize first? Majority Leader?
Sorry, Mr. Speaker, I'm confused as to who you are referring to. Anyway, Mr. Speaker, may we recognize MP Tagal?
MP Tagal is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In order to refresh the memory of our colleagues in the Bangsa-Moro Parliament, Mr. Speaker, it is a wide debate on the nomenclature or the names of the Committee on Accounts, because it was raised during the budget deliberation, Mr. Speaker. As I understand it, Mr. Speaker, when the Committee on Accounts and Audit prepared the budget of the parliament and submitted the budget of the parliament, and I think, Mr. Speaker, if you can recall it, you are one, you are one of the person that questions the name of the Committee on Accounts and Audit. Sabi mo, bakit pinagsama? And if I memory serves me right or so, it was also Ms. Dandaman Latif also questions the nomenclature of the name of the Committee on Accounts and Audit. Kasi sabi niyo po inconsistent may Committee on Accounts and Audit, ikaw na mag-aaccoun, ikaw pang mag-audit. For the benefit of the members of this august body, in accounting parlance, ang ibig sabihin ng accounts, preparation of financial statements. Ang audit, scrutiny of financial statements, makay ba yon? In accounting parlance, that's why we use, in terms of financial transactions, yun ang meaning. Pero ngayon, tinaslit natin sa performance meaning, pero ganun din, ganun din po. In analogues circumstances, we can translate that, Mr. Speaker. Kaya ko lang ito sinasabi, Mr. Speaker, para lang ma-rephrase 'yung mind natin, bakit, hindi kasi nabanggit 'yung majority? Bakit kasi natin inamin ng gross finalitan 'yung Committee on Accounts and Audit? Kasi tinaslit nun, nung isubmit natin 'yung budget ng parliament, bakit pinagsama 'yung accounts and budget, which is inconsistent to each other? Kasi ikaw na nagpa-prepare, ikaw pang mag-audit sa sarili mo. So, yun lang, para lang ma-rephrase tayo.
Now, it has been clarified by the exchanges earlier.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize...
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize some members of the parliament who are on Zoom? MP May Sara Dandaman Latif indicated that she wants to be recognized.
MP May Sara Dandaman Latif is hereby recognized.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, MP Tagal was correct when he manifested that I was one of those who asked clarification on why Committee on Accounts prepares the budget and in rules, it is the Finance Committee who prepares, and then it's the Committee on Accounts who audits. So, that's the reason why during our committee on rules meeting, we decided to amend in order to conform to what we have established as a tradition and practice. So, it is the Committee on Accounts that has jurisdiction to prepare the budget of the parliament and have jurisdiction over all matters that relates to the income of the parliament and expenditures. This internal budget pertains only to the parliament and does not pertain to the entire Bangsa-Moro machine, Mr. Speaker. Because for that, we need to set up a separate parliament that is called Public Accounts Committee. So, that is the main distinction between the Public Accounts Committee and the Committee on Accounts. As to the word "audit", Mr. Chair, indeed, you are correct, Mr. Speaker, that it should be included in the content of jurisdiction of Committee on Accounts. Because as I have reviewed also the Committee on Accounts in other jurisdictions, Mr. Chair, the word "audit" appears also inside a Committee on Accounts definition. They use the word "Committee on Accounts", Mr. Chair. They don't use "audit", Mr. Chair. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, MP May Sara. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, can we, I move that we recognize MP James Macaraya.
The Honorable Gentleman from Lanau, Sur is hereby recognized, MP James Macaraya.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Deputy Majority Floor Leader. This is just an observation, this is manifestation, actually, Mr. Speaker. I observe that there is a semblance of divesting one's function, and there is also semblance of overlapping one committee. It connotes that there may be an excessive power of a committee, a one committee. Even we allow that to happen, Mr. Speaker, in the actual performance of the functions of the Committee on Finance, can they perform effectively even we allow that to happen, Mr. Speaker? Thank you.
The sponsor, the committee report?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the committee, committee in the parliament, Mr. Speaker, has an inherent power, Mr. Speaker, including the oversight function to review performance of the Bangsa-Moro government, Mr. Speaker. This is an inherent power, even without mentioning the power, Mr. Speaker, the committee has the power to do so, Mr. Speaker.
MP James, are you satisfied with the answer of the sponsor? Just a manifestation, right?
So, Mr. Speaker, may we now recognize MP Rasul Mitmung?
I just wish that we can now proceed to move forward after MP Ras...
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
After we hear the question of MP Ras Mitmog. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I've noticed that the Committee on Finance Budget and Management is one of the, if not the largest committee that we have in the Parliament. And I noticed for the last two years, for our practice, we have subcommittees. I am just... I want to inquire from the good Majority Floor Leader if he's interested on formalizing the subcommittee so that every time it's organized, it's easier for everybody.
Will that be...
Mr. Speaker, that would be the prerogatives of the Chairman of the Committee on Accounts to create subcommittees, Mr. Speaker, depending on the situation, Mr. Speaker. So, sa akin na, Mr. Speaker...
The committee on Finance?
Yes, Committee on Finance, Budget and Management. Yung pag-create ng mga subcommittees, even other committees, Mr. Speaker, ay may power di mag-create ng subcommittees. Nasa prerogatives na yun ng Chairman ng Committees, Mr. Speaker. So, let them give the wisdom, let the wisdom of the Chairman to do so, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
I move to terminate the period of interpolation.
One last, Majority Leader.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker. May we recognize MP Majahin?
MP Majahin is recognized. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. It's just a simple manifestation, Mr. Speaker. I noticed, Mr. Speaker, the member of the Committee on Finance composed of 31 members. But I observed, Mr. Speaker, that the membership of these committees, and not only for the committee, and there are so many committees, that it is not geographically balanced, Mr. Speaker, if I say this, Mr. Speaker. With that, with this, Mr. Speaker, can it be possible for the committee chair to look into their members, who are the members of this committee? And if they see that some of the province, for instance, that has no member in the province, if it is possible to choose or to select or encourage one of them to be part of the membership of their committee, Mr. Speaker? That's all my concern, Mr. Speaker.
I think that's just a manifestation and that may be addressed by the leadership on how best to accommodate those in the committees coming. You are referring to a territorial distribution of membership in the committees, as I get it, as I understand it. Are you referring to those areas? MPs coming from areas that are not members of this committee?
Exactly, Mr. Speaker. For instance, the Committee on Finance, I think none, am from the province of Basilanas, member of the committee except the ex-official and the person of the deputy speaker. And there are also a committee that we want to be part of the committee, but unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, we... Our request is not granted or were not considered, Mr. Speaker. That's my concern, Mr. Speaker.
That's part of the plan of the leadership of the Parliament, to revisit the rules so that we can address some issues relating to the committee. I think that was proposed by the Deputy Majority Leader, Pae Salintago. To activate all the committees and see where we are lacking that causes the delay in the actions of the different committees, maybe in coordination with the leadership of the Bangsa-Moro Government so that we can expedite measure spending in the Parliament. So we will take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
We have heard you, but we will refer that to the Commission Rule.
So at this point, Mr. Speaker, I move that the period of interpolation be closed? Closed? And...
There is now a motion to close the period of interpolation. Is there any second? There is... It is jurisdiction content, therefore, the period of interpolation is now closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the period of amendments be open.
The period of amendments now open.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
May I be recognized?
Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that MP Baintan Ampatuan be recognized.
MP Baintan Ampatuan is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have two proposed amendments. First, on the Committee on Finance Budget and Management. If the secretariat could flash the screen, the wording should be this way. Committee on Finance Budget and Management. The Committee on Finance Budget and Management shall have 31 members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to the incomes, revenues, preparation and management of budget and the appropriation of funds for the operations of the Bangsa-Moro Government until the end. It's an insertion of the word incomes and revenues before the word finance, but delete the word finance.
It's an amendments made insertion.
Incomes, comma, revenues, but delete the word finance.
Can we hear from the sponsor? Can you restate your proposed amendment?
Yeah, incomes and revenues, but delete the word finance for that specific paragraph, Mr. Speaker. And on the second paragraph, Mr. Speaker, I propose to remove the word internal, Mr. Speaker, and... Until... Remove the word internal, then up to the word budget, Bangsa-Moro Government, then all the words after the Bangsa-Moro Government should also be deleted, Mr. Speaker. Because it's already found...
How will you now read your proposed amendment?
The proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, is the work of the Committee on Finance Budget and Management includes the scrutiny and review, insert the word review, of the budget of the Bangsa-Moro Government.
Majority Sponsor?
Scrutiny and review of the Bangsa-Moro... Of the budget of the Bangsa-Moro Government. Period. Um, Mr. Speaker, may we hear some...
Yes, the proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, is accepted.
I have also some proposal on the Committee on Accounts, Mr. Speaker. May... May we request the secretariat, Mr. Speaker, to... To read the amended version, Mr. Speaker, just for us to be sure that we are on the same page, Mr. Speaker. Um, Mr. Speaker, my request is for the secretariat to read the entire amendments, Mr. Speaker.
The amended provisions, please, Secretariat, read.
Mr. Speaker, produced amendments on the committee report is that Committee on Finance Budget and Management, the Committee on Finance Budget and Management shall have 31 members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to the incomes and revenues, preparation and management of budget and appropriation of funds for the operations of the Bangsa-Moro Government, including its expenditures, payments of public indebtedness, claims against the Bangsa-Moro Government, intergovernmental revenue sharing, and in general, all matters relating to public expenditures. For the second paragraph, the work of the Committee on Finance Budget and Management includes the scrutiny and review of the budget of the Bangsa-Moro Government. Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, if I pay one last because based on the reading, Mr. Speaker, we found the word management not appropriate in the entire definition, Mr. Speaker, and I further move that, Mr. Speaker, to remove the word management. Preparation and the word and management. And management. Yeah. Preparation of budget and appropriation of funds.
Sponsor?
Incomes, comma, remove the word and. Yeah. That's it, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The proposed amendment is accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Subject to style.
Subject to style.
Subject to style.
This is already, Mr. Speaker, very detailed proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker. May I know what is the subject of the style, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the incomes is without S. The expenditures is without S, Mr. Speaker. That's all the subject to the style, Mr. Speaker.
The spelling.
So, in that case, Mr. Speaker, we will... We will remove it immediately, Mr. Speaker, so that in the final version, Mr. Speaker, it will be the final, final of...
Final, final.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. My next proposed amendment...
Refinements, ang ibig sabi niya. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My next proposal, proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, is on the Committee on Accounts. And the proposal shall be read as follows. The Committee on Accounts shall have 17 members. It shall have jurisdictions over all matters pertaining to budget preparation, review, review and audit of performance. Review and audit of performance. Review and audit of performance and other related activities of the Bangsa-Moro Parliament.
Sponsor?
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Accept?
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker. I will restate my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed. Are we ready to hear the woman MP, Deputy Minority Leader?
Um, Mr. Speaker, the proposed amendment goes like this. Committee on Accounts. The Committee on Accounts shall have 17 members. It shall have jurisdiction over all matters pertaining to review and scrutiny of budget of the Bangsa-Moro Parliament. Period. Review and scrutiny of the Bangs... Review and scrutiny of budget... Of the budget of the Bangsa-Moro Parliament.
Of the budget of the Bangsa-Moro Parliament. Full stop.
And all other related activities of the Bangsa-Moro Parliament. As isyan siya. Yung performance wala na, yung audit wala na. Budget preparation wala na rin. Review and scrutiny of the budget and other activities of the Bangsa-Moro Parliament.
of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. And then, the Bangsa Moro Parliament. Period.
Full stop, period.
It shall, yes, and it shall have the power, it shall have the power to review. Yes, to review and scrutinize, and scrutinize the budget and expenditure of the, the budget and activities of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. So, pareho lang po nun kay MP Baintan.
Scrutinize, the budget and...
Scrutinize.
Tanggali na.
The, yes.
Budget.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
A proponent of the amendments, do you accept the amendments to the amendments? Going once, going twice. Okay na tayo?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I accept, but with the further modification of my earlier amendment, Mr. Speaker, to remove the word "and other activities." And maybe subject to style, because we double-use the word "Bangsa Moro Parliament," MP Maysara, in just one paragraph, so maybe we can reword that. But the thought of the amendment of MP Maysara is accepted, Mr. Speaker, but just to not repeat the word "Bangsa Moro Parliament," maybe we can find some reformulation, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Tanggali lang isang Bangsa Moro Parliament. Yeah. Sponsor?
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension.
After consultation with the speaker and the members of the parliament, mas klaro at maganda yung formulation ni MP Baintan Ampatuan, Mr. Speaker, to avoid the confusion with the powers of the Committee on Finance Budget and Management. So, hindi po accepted yung proposed amendments ni...
Hindi accepted yung?
Proposed itong amendment to the amendment.
Amendments to the amendment.
Yes. So, yung may sa MP Maysara. So, ipaki-balik na lang dun sa provision na ni Baintan Ampatuan po.
So, paano, paano, how will it read now? Kung wala yung, kung hindi accepted yung proposed amendments to the amendment...
Yung kay Baintan Ampatuan, hindi kay one minute suspension.
May I request the Secretary to just undo the editing? Ah, no, no, copy paste, because we will retain the, the proposal of MP Maysara, then... Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
Majority Leader, MP...
Yes, Mr. Speaker, MP...
Mr. Speaker.
Maysara Dandaman Latif wants to be recognized.
MP Maysara is recognized?
Mr. Speaker, in the original formulation, there was no mention of the jurisdiction of the Committee on Matters Pertaining to Budget. That's the reason why I included that the Committee on Accounts shall have seventeen members, which shall have jurisdiction over all matters pertaining to the budget and expenditures of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. Period. Because it would appear that if you remove the word "budget," what is the jurisdiction of the Committee on Accounts, only to the review and scrutiny? Or does it also have jurisdiction over the preparation of budget? That's the reason why I included the word "budget," pertaining to budget and expenditures, in makes generic sense. If you remove the word "budget," Mr. Speaker, then it would only constitute a power to review, but not prepare the budget.
Yes, the response with the query of MP Maysara, the preparation of the budget falls with the office of the speaker, together with the technical people who has know-how on the preparation of the budget. Then, pag matapos na po yung preparation of budget ng office of the speaker, that is the time na i-re-review ng Committee on Accounts, Mr. Speaker. So, yun po yung understanding na...
Committee on Accounts proceed to the Committee on Finance.
Yes, yes. So, mas favorable, accepted po itong proposal ni MP Baintan Ampatuan, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, may I be clarified?
Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
That was the clarification. The office of the speaker...
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
The office of the speaker and its...
Technical people.
...finance will prepare the internal budget of the Parliament, and then forward it to the Committee on Accounts, and then the Committee on Accounts will, after it act on that, will submit that to the Committee on Finance for consolidation. Is that correct, Mr. Sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. That is the intention, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
The Dalila. MP Maysara?
Yes, I have already clarified, Mr. Speaker, that in this case, the power of the Committee on Accounts is over scrutiny and review of the budget of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. May I be clarified if it's a post-pact review or prior review? After the preparation of the speaker?
Post-review.
Yes, after the preparation of the speaker.
After they prepare it by the speaker's office.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
Yes, to clarify, Mr. Speaker, the budget prepared by the technical people of the office of the speaker will be submitted to the Committee on Accounts, and the Committee on Accounts will act on it and approve the same, and submitted to the Ministry of Finance Budget and Management for consolidation, Mr. Speaker. That is the power. So, Mr. Speaker, upon consultation with the, Mr. Presiding Officer, upon consultation with the speaker, the word "scrutiny," and scrutiny, Mr. Speaker, be deleted, Mr. Speaker. So, pertaining to review of the budget of the Bangsa Moro Parliament.
Can we listen, please?
May I?
Can we just listen to the exchanges? There are interruptions here.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, may we, may we recognize? Just a food for thought.
Mr. Speaker, MP...
Is that related to the...
Yes.
Is Maysara, are you done with your question, MP Maysara?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker. In that case, I yield to the proposal of MP Baintan, Mr. Speaker. I yield, yes, Mr. Speaker, to the proposal of MP Baintan, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker...
Majority Leader?
I move that we recognize MP Sangki.
Yes.
MP Ali Sangki of Magindanao is hereby recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Earlier, I have been reviewing the records, this committee report number fifty-four, and I was trying to speak before the other speakers, but since the issue is the same thing, it's about budgeting. I think I have to, uh... Okay?
Can we tone down our voices? There are deliberations ongoing.
Yes.
Can we tone down our voices, please, gentlemen?
Per this document, Mr. Speaker, it's very clear that there is this, what we call the, a created committee by this August body. One of this body created was the Committee on Accounts and Budget. Now, on the next page, yung tinatawag na budget was removed, so lumolbas ito Committee on Accounts na lang. But if you look into the powers given to this committee, it appears that you're talking of money, you talk of budget, and we must remind this body that there is what we call budget preparation, budget call. And this budget call prescribe the guidelines on how we are going to prepare the budget, and this is the topic of this committee report. And this representation would like to invite the attention of the body that when you talk of accounts, when you talk of money matters, there is standing national policy, meron tayong tinatawag na commission and audit, and that whatever allocation that we are going to provide, this must be properly accounted. So, how can you account a money without reviewing it? And this document shows that the Committee on Accounts shall have jurisdiction over all matters pertaining to, pertaining to review and scrutiny of the performance of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority or this body.
What is the amendment, gentleman from Magindanao? What is the proposed amendment?
The proposal of this representation, Mr. Speaker, is that the word "Committee on Accounts and Budget," the word "budget" should be retained on account of the fact that this was already created by this August body. I remember that January, this, this committee was already created, Committee on Accounts and Budget. And remember that when there is doubt on how we are disbanding the money, there is a safeguard measure, meron tayong tinatawag na sa ibang agency na internal audit team, internal, meaning a built-in audit to safeguard the money of the body.
That is outside. Are you doing a manifestation or proposing an amendment?
I am, I am thinking of maintaining the word "Committee on Accounts and Budget."
Meron ba tayong...
And a Committee on Accounts and Audit.
That has been exhaustively discussed already, and in fact, there are now, it is now clear by way of clarifying that in the contents and the proposed, the proposed Committee on Rules appointment, remove the audit, but the function still includes review in the contents. So, that was the compromise earlier.
Yes.
Your concern is duly noted.
Yeah, because you are talking of reviewing government's expenditure.
Yes, sir. Yan na po yung kanina, past one hour deliberation.
So, the word, the Committee on Accounts and Audit, mawala yung, the word "audit" maging Committee on Accounts na lang?
Opo, yan na po ang napag-agreehan...
But the powers and mandate is the same thing.
But the function...
The function.
Oh, kasi ang audit being referred to there is review, not necessarily the audit, but you're referring to internal control that's being practiced.
Yes.
It will not be, it will not be disregarded. So, that's how I will answer your, clarify you.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this representation is only manifesting his observation on the basis of factual situation pertaining in many government issues.
Yes, we have been in national government also. So, thank you very much, gentleman from Magindanao. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, MP Baintan Ampatuan wants to clarify, I think, the language that's flashed right now.
MP Baintan is recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker, because based on the screen, Mr. Speaker, the word "and scrutiny" is stricken off. May I know, Mr. Speaker, what's the reason? Because if that is not acceptable, Mr. Speaker, I have counter-proposal, Mr. Speaker, on the use of the word, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the reason, Mr. Speaker, is the word redundant, because if you conduct review, you are scrutiny the budget of the Bangsa Moro, Mr. Speaker. So, review includes the word "scrutiny," Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I have actually other things in my mind when I talk about scrutiny, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my proposal, Mr. Speaker, is instead of the word, using the word "scrutiny," Mr. Speaker, my proposal, Mr. Speaker, is to use the word as a...
And we must remind this body that there is what we call budget preparation, budget call. And this budget call prescribe the guidelines on how we are going to prepare the budget. And this is the topic of this, uh, committee, uh, report. And, uh, this representation would like to invite the attention of the body that when you talk of accounts, when you talk of money matters, there is a standing national policy, meron tanga tayong tinatawag na commission and audit. And that, uh, whatever allocation that we are going to provide, this must be properly accounted. So how can you account a money without reviewing it? And this document shows that the Committee on Accounts shall have jurisdiction over all matters per relating to, meron tanganat, pertaining to review and scrutiny of the performance of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority or this body. So...
What is the amendment, gentleman from Magindanao? What is the proposed amendment?
Uh, my, the proposal of this representation, Mr. Speaker, is that the word Committee on Accounts and Budget, the word budget should be retained on account of the fact that this was already created by this August body. I remember that January, this, this committee was already created, Committee on Accounts and Budget. And remember that, uh, when there is doubt on how we are dispersing the money, there is, there is a safeguard measure, meron tayong tinatawag na sa ibang agencina, internal audit team. Internal, meaning a built-in audit to safeguard the money of the body. Let...
That is outside. Are you doing a manifestation or proposing an amendment?
Uh, I am, I am, uh, thinking of maintaining, maintaining the word Committee on Accounts and Budget.
Meron ba tayo?
And, uh, Committee on Accounts and, and Audit.
That has been, uh, exhaustively discussed already, and in fact, there are now, it is now clear by way of, uh, clarifying that in the contents and, uh, the proposed, uh, the proposed Committee on Rules appointment remove the audit, but the function still includes review in the, in the contents. So that was the compromise earlier.
Yes.
Yeah, your, your concern is duly noted.
Uh, yun ah, because you are talking of reviewing government expenditure?
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, yan na po 'yung kaninang, uh, past one hour deliberation.
So, the word, the, the Committee on, on Accounts and Audit, mawala 'yung, the word audit, maging Committee on Accounts na lang?
Opo, yan na po ang napag-agrihan ng...
But, but the powers and mandate is the same thing.
But the function...
The function.
Uh, kasi ang audit being referred to there is review, not necessarily the audit. But you're referring to internal control that's being practiced.
Yes.
It will, it will not be, uh, it will not be disregarded. So, that's how I will answer your, clarify you.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. This representation is only manifesting his observation on the basis of factual situation pertaining in many government cases.
We have been in national government also. So, thank you very much, uh, gentleman from Magindanao.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, MP Baintan Ampatuan wants to clarify, I think, the language that's flashed right now.
MP Baintan is recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Because based on the screen, Mr. Speaker, the word and scrutiny is, uh, is stricken off. Uh, may I know, Mr. Speaker, um, what's the reason? Because, uh, if that is not acceptable, Mr. Speaker, I have counter-proposal, Mr. Speaker, on the use of the word, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker. The, uh, reason, Mr. Speaker, is the word redundant because, uh, if you conduct review, you are scrutiny the, uh, budget of the Bangsa Moro, uh, Mr. Speaker. So, uh, review includes, uh, the word scrutiny, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, um, I have actually other, uh, things in my mind, uh, when I, when I talk about scrutiny, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Speaker, my proposal, Mr. Speaker, is instead of the word, using the word scrutiny, Mr. Speaker, um, my proposal, Mr. Speaker, is to use the word assessment, Mr. Speaker.
Assessment.
Review and assessment of budget of the Bangsa Moro Parliament, Mr. Speaker.
Sponsor?
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, assessment, the proponent will accept the...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, no more?
Valiyo is failing. Mr. Speaker, may I propose? Sultan Rimbang?
Majority Leader.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, we'd just like to make a correction on the, uh, spelling of assessment.
Assessment ba?
But it has been accepted, Mr. Speaker. So, si...
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Speaker...
One minute suspension. Bye. By text, by text. Review and assessment. Ah, bayan na proposal, review and assessment. Okay. Uh, Majority Leader, sexual issue. Assess, hindi na assessment.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Speaker, since the word review is used as a verb, I think the word assessment is now assess as a verb.
Okay.
Okay, assess the budget of the Bangsa Moro Parliament.
Okay na.
So, assess the budget of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. Assess the...
Parang iba na 'yan.
Ah, okay. Sorry, Mr. Speaker, I think, um, the review there is a noun, and therefore, the word assessment is in order pertaining to the review and assessment of the budget.
So, we go back to... And assessment.
Assessment of the budget. Pertaining to the review. Yan.
Mr. Speaker.
I think...
Naglilang po.
Yes, the majority. The proponent, Mr. Speaker, accepted the, yes, accepted the proposals. Proposal amendments.
Accepted na?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
The proposal is accepted. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, I move that we recognize MP Sultan Rimbang.
The Honorable Sultan Idrissa Rimbang Oblanau Sur is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Speaker of the day. Napakabuti mong tao at napakagwapa mo. Sa, saka sa Majority Plor Leader, Deputy Majority Plor Leader. Uh, Member of Parliament, salam alaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala barakatuh sa'ting mga GED Sekretariat. Uh, total na man, isa Committee on Accounts. Sa pagkakaalam natin, member, kasama ko dyan, member ako dyan, pero ang kademya, kademya namimbya dyan, ay mga ministri. So, bakit hindi natin ilagay Bangsa Moro Government? Kasi para may, ano ba, may tunog ba, may, kung ilalagay natin, Parliament, parang dito lang sa Parliament eh. Pero ang kung ilagay natin Bangsa Moro Government, lahat ng sakop na Bangsa Moro ay sakop ng account. Kasi mahirap po kung alam natin 'yung batas, role, na hindi rin natin sundin. Ang sundin natin, 'yung gusto natin, medyo hindi maganda 'yan sa panili ng tao. Hindi nga maganda sa panili natin na kaya nakakagulu-gulu to, kasi hindi to susunod dun sa role, nakalagay sa Bangsa Moro, uh, role, or sa 1154. Sa napo, iniiliin ko sa ating mga, kung may colleague, Mr. Speaker, nasumunod po tayo para hindi po tayo nakagulu-gulu rito sa account. Bangsa Moro Government na lang ilagay natin para sa regular na ano. Thank you, ano...
Hindi po tayo nagtatagulo. Baka mag-send ng wrong impression 'yan, ah, we are on, uh, live. Uh, we are discussing so that we can perfect the wordings at saka 'yung anong tama. So, yun po ang, uh, pag-exchange ng view is healthy. Healthy, that's, uh, right, in the same way that you have your own right. So, but, uh... So, meron na proposal si MP Sultan Rimbang, uh... May we hear from the sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the, uh, the, uh, good, uh, my idol, Sultan Rimbang, uh, the, the committee that he, uh, described, Mr. Speaker, is the Committee on Finance Budget and Management. Uh, yun po 'yung sa kuwan, yun po 'yung sa, uh, appropriate committee dun sa, uh, review. Pero itong pinag-usapan po natin Committee on Accounts, ay, para lang po ito sa Bangsa Moro Parliament. So, dalawang committee, yun, actually member ka rin ang dalawang committee na idol.
Yes, yes.
So, uh, yun po yun. Uh, uh, dun po may ilagay 'yung Bangsa Moro Government dun sa itaas, Mr. Speaker.
So, yun po, uh, MP Sultan Rimbang, maliwanag na po ba, 'yung Committee on Accounts take charge of the budget of the Parliament, internal budget. Yung Committee on Finance, uh, takes charge of the entire. MP Rimbang?
Yes, uh, Speaker, uh, atayin, sa ano pala, sa Bangsa Moro Finance, uh, Committee, uh, ano pa ba nakalagay dun, Bangsa Moro Government o same, uh...
Miss, Mr. Speaker, I think it pertains to Bangsa...
Bangsa Moro Government, Mr. Speaker. Bangsa Moro Government po nakalagay dun, yes.
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, kung ganun, bakit hindi natin ilagay rin na Bangsa Moro Government din? Kasi alam ko, key speaker naman to, para naman to's key speaker, saka sa mga ministri. Para naman magandang pakin, ganun na lahat ng ministri ay, uh, nasasakop ng account. At na government na sakop na Bangsa Moro.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the recommendation of MP Sultan...
Recommendation lang 'yan, Speaker, kung, uh, naayon sa law...
Duly, duly noted, Mr. Speaker.
1154. Uh, sumunod tayo. Pero kung hindi lang na, ako naayon dun sa 1154 o sa ating batas, ay mahirap naman nagawa natin na hindi pala naayon sa batas natin.
Mr. Speaker. Yes, uh, duly noted, Mr. Speaker.
Duly noted, MP Sultan Rimbang. Uh, it deals with two committees for the internal budget of the Parliament and the government of the day. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, my colleague, uh, ma'am, uh, Deputy Majority Plor Leader. I thank you, ako, mga pala, sa Parliament tayo. Mas maganda kung sa Parliament na lang nakakakop 'yung account.
Duly noted, uh, Sultan Rimbang, uh, thank you very much.
MP...
Thank you, thank you very much. Salam alaikum.
Alaikum assalam.
Mr. Speaker...
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I think MP Mujahid would like to introduce another amendment.
MP Mujahid is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have, um, two proposed amendments, Mr. Speaker. First, um, the, uh, if the, um, committee, uh, of account will accept the amendment in adding after Bangsa Moro Parliament and the expedite, expenditures of the Bangsa Moro Government. Eh, kasi, kapag hindi natin i-isa 'yung, the expenditure of the Bangsa Moro Government, as if that we are, uh, decreasing the, the power of the Committee on Accounts, so...
Ano na tanggalin 'yan?
Uh, government po. The expenditures of the Bangsa Moro Government.
Tanong ko lang, uh, from the chair.
Yes, yes.
Eh, di ba ang, um, when you use the word, uh, but, uh, expenditures, dapat revenue and expenditures? Tama ba yun, uh, Deputy Majority, Majority Leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh, 'yung power na to review the, uh, expenditures of the government, uh, Bangsa Moro Government, uh, falls with the jurisdiction of the Committee on Finance Budget and Management. So, magkakaroon ng overlapping. Uh, 'yung power na yan ay naka-indicate na dun sa Committee on Finance Budget and Management. Basta ang intention lang natin dito sa Committee on Accounts ito, ay, dito lang sa Parliament na ito. Uh, 'yung, wala ba sito sa Parliament, ay, nandoon sa Committee on Finance Budget and Management. Yun po 'yung intention natin dito sa Committee.
Uh, so, so then, the Committee on Finance, its power is not only in, uh, preparing the budget, but also to, uh, preview, uh, to review and assess also the expenditures of...
Of the Bangsa Moro Government, tas'ong.
Uh-huh. Uh, if that is, uh, the case, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, since it is already part of the power and functions of the Committee on Finance, uh, so, I adhere, Mr. Speaker, to the Majority Leader to, uh, review, uh, to, to remove the, my, my, uh, my proposal, uh, amendment. My second amendment, Mr. Speaker. The composition or the committee of Committee on Finance Budget and Management. Uh... If you can add, Mr. Speaker, uh, the number of the members of the Committee on Finance, uh, since this 31 members is already there, and in order to accommodate some, uh, members also that who, uh, those who, uh, intend to be a member of the committee, uh, if we add, oh, Mr. Speaker, to make it 33 instead of 31, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader, the sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, there is a complication on that, Mr. Speaker. So, I think we have to discuss that in the Committee on Rules, on the, uh, uh, increase of the membership of, uh, committee because there is a bearing of that, uh, kailangan po namin pag-usapan 'yan, 'yung mga issues na increase ng committee na 'yan, Mr. Speaker. So, iniiliin po natin sa kasama natin, ke MP Mujahid, uh, ilay down po 'yan sa meeting namin sa Committee on Rules, on the increase of the membership ng, uh, each committees.
So, kailangan niya nang oras sa Committee on Rules, pag-usapan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you, MP Mujahid.
Mr. Speaker, since there is no other, uh, member of the Parliament intending to make any amendment, I move to close the period of amendment.
The period of amendments is now closed. There is a motion to close the period of amendments duly seconded. Is there any objection there being none, same is hereby approved? Majority Leader.
I move to approve the, uh, committee report as amended, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a motion to approve the committee report as amended.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any second? Duly seconded. Is there any objection there being none, same is hereby approved? Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. Ingbigay mo muna sa akin.
I now reclaimish my role, Mr. Speaker, as, uh, Majority Leader, and give it back to the...
You are now returning.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, may we respectfully recognize MP, uh, Amir Mualil, Mr. Speaker.
The MP, the gentleman from Basilan and Sulu is hereby recognized. MP Amir Mualil.
From Tawi-Tawi, Mr. Speaker.
And from Tawi-Tawi. From the Highland Provinces.
In relation to the approval of the, uh, amended, uh, rules, may we request the Secretariat that the members of Parliament be copy-furnish of the new amended rules, uh, integrating the changes that were approved by this, uh, plenary, uh, earlier, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, the Secretariat, the Secretariat is directed to furnish each and every member of the final, uh, amended Committee on Rules, uh, which we just discussed. Noted. Majority, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, MP, uh, Paisalintago.
MP Paisalintago is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh. Uh, salam alaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala warakatu.
Alaikum assalam.
I'm very, very mindful of your caveat where I lagged it. We will go direct to the point.
Yes, please.
Regarding the parliamentary rules of this, uh, Parliament body, it is my humble suggestion, Mr. Speaker, uh, with the indulgence of my majority plorder since I was, uh, selected, uh, eh, as Deputy Majority Plorder, to review the, uh, the entire, uh, paraisan na lang, the entire, uh, parliamentary rules. Then after that, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, after approving it, we can publish it so that it can become, instead of noticing personam, it can become noticing ring, so that it can be applicable to all if it is published. That is my suggestion, humble suggestion, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, to response with the query of MP Paisalintago, uh, the speaker, uh, created a small group to review the entire parliamentary rules, procedures, and practices. And in fact, the office of the speaker have already approved, except that the jurisdiction of the two committees. If this has already been amended, then we are ready to publish the, uh, uh, parliamentary rules and procedures and practices. Yun lang po medyo nagpa, uh, uh, stop sa pag-publish natin dun sa jurisdiction na 'yan. So, since na, so naayos natin ito sa araw na ito, uh, the speaker is now ready to, uh, and the Parliament is now ready to publish the parliamentary rules, procedures, and practices.
So...
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, uh, I yield to the statement of the Majority Plor Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, so we proceed to the Committee Report Number...
In response to the Deputy Majority Leader's suggestion, what need we...
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we are ready to publish the...
We will do it.
Uh, yes, as soon as possible, Mr. Speaker.
So that there will be no more point of order? Because you cannot raise a point of order to a rule which is not published because it's not effective. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, MP, may we respectfully recognize MP, uh, James Makaraya.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Yes, may we respectfully recognize MP James Makaraya.
MP James Makaraya.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, uh, MP Paisalintago had just agreed on the, uh, uh, idea of, uh, our Majority Plor Leader that if we happen to review, uh, the rules, uh, the suggestion of our Majority Plor Leader is to accept, uh, to, na, 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 not to include, uh, the two committees. I would suggest that, uh, if there will be an opportunity to, to review the parliamentary rules, procedures, and practices, we include these, uh, two committees, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, upon, uh, conversation with the speaker, uh, the, the parliamentary rules, procedures, and practices is evolving and developing, meaning it will be, uh, subject to further, uh, improvement in the future. So, if we, if this August body will decide to include not only two committees, but, uh, more committees if, uh, time appropriate for that matter, then we can include it in the future. But, uh, what is important today is that we can publish the parliamentary rules and procedures and practices so that we can have a, uh, uh, parliamentary rules which is valid and effective, uh, parliamentary rules, procedures, and practices. Sabihin, uh, pwede pa tayo mag-improve. Hindi big sabihin na pag nag-publish tayo, hindi na pwedeng galawin. Pwede pa nating improve, pwede pa nating enhance, pwede pa tayo magdagdag ng mga committees kung nakikita na ayon sa kagustuhan ng this August body. Yun po 'yung, uh, sagot dun sa query ni MP James Makaraya, Mr. Speaker.
MP Makaraya.
Yes, anyway, that's just a request.
Yes, I think that will be covered by the earlier proposal of, uh, the Deputy Majority Leader to, to review its entirety. Its entirety.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Majority Leader. Majority Leader, I can see the hands raised.
Yes, MP, uh...
Yes, sir. MP Rasmit Mog is recognized.
Thank you, Majority Plor Leader, Sir Speaker. Uh, Sir Speaker, um, I would like to ask a point of inquiry. If we publish the rules after all of us are being, uh, submit, uh, all of us receive the, the latest version of the rules, will it also mean that the other committees be activated?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the committees will be activated as soon as possible, Mr. Speaker. I have the word with that.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, MP Rasmit Mog. Anymore? No more, Majority Leader.
In that case, Mr. Speaker, may we respectfully recognize MP Raisaja Juri to proceed with the reading of the Committee Report Number 53.
Committee Report, reading of the Committee Report? No, we have already approved the, the rules.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the commit, that is Committee Report Number 54. We have now the Committee Report Number 53, which is the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code, uh, Committee Report, Mr. Speaker. We have now the committee report number 53, which is the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code, uh, committee report, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, the committee report 53 is, uh, we just received it, so we will proceed to...
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, MP Bayutan.
Um, may we know if we have a printed copy of the bill which the committee report anchors on?
Which the committee report is tackling? I think there are, based on the copies here, there are referals of provisions.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, the, the agreement, Mr. Speaker, is that I, I will just read the committee report and then adapt the committee report, but the period of interrogation and debate on the Bangsa Moro Service...
The deliberation will be in the next session.
Will be tackled in the next session, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, our appeal, Mr. Speaker, is to get the hard copy of the bill.
The rules, uh, the Civil Service Code itself.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, to check with our lawyers, the uh, final amendments, Mr. Speaker.
I will give the copy today, uh, because this is...
So, the code itself will be distributed to the members.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker. May we know, may we know pang the MPs, what, MP Bayutan, kung ano po 'yung gusto niya, 'yung uh, bill as filed or 'yung bill na as approved by the committee?
Um, Mr. Speaker, if as much as possible, if the proponents could already include the uh, amendments to the final, or the second final copy.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Please highlight the portion that, uh, that was amended, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, yes, Mr. Speaker.
So that we will uh, see the flow of uh, the thoughts of uh, the code, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, 'yung uh, Parliament Bill Number 59 as amended is ongoing, 'yung printing ngayon, uh, and then ina, inaayos, then we begin natin sa mawat members ng Parliament.
You know, we can, maybe we can proceed first with the committee report reading for adoption. May we hear from the sponsor? Noted na, uh, we duly take note of the manifestation of Bayutan.
So, Mr. Speaker, uh, on the matter...
MP Raisa Jajuri is recognized.
Uh, I will now act as Majority Floor Leader, Mr. Speaker. We are now on committee report number 53 and we respectfully ask that the Majority Floor Leader, the Chair of the Committee on Rules, be allowed to make a presentation of commit, of said committee report, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, if we appeal to the body as what we did in the, in the Bangsa Moro Administrative Code to just cite the important uh, dates and events on how we arrive on this Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code, considering that the committee report is very thick, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I will just summarize, Mr. Speaker, on what transpired on this committee report, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
The Committee on Rules, which uh, uh, was referred by the Parliament Number 59 by the government of the day, an act providing for the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code of the Bangsa Moro autonomous region and Muslim Mindanao Barn, has considered the same as the honor to report back in the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament, uh, Mr. Speaker, with uh, recommendation and that it be approved with the, uh, following amendments and observation, Mr. Speaker. I will just summarize the uh, on how we arrived with this uh, committee report.
Question, have we given them all the copies of the committee report?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Those physically present?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Already done?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. This Cabinet Bill Number 59, Mr. Speaker, is, was filed by the government of the day last June, July 27, 2020. After consideration and reading on first reading, uh, and second reading, Mr. Speaker, we, the proposed, uh, cabinet bill number 59 was referred to the Committee on Rules for discussion and deliberations. We first discussed and deliberated the Bangsa Moro Administrative Code and we uh, passed it and approved it last year, Mr. Speaker. So after that, we proceed with the approval, uh, with the discussion and deliberation of the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code. As the same with the Bangsa Moro Administrative Code, Mr. Speaker, we created panels for purposes of conducting public consultations, uh, Mr. Speaker. And on November 9 to 11, 2020, uh, there were series of public consultations. The following experts, uh, resource speakers from the different schools of thought from uh, from UP, uh, Diliman, uh, from Ateneo, uh, and from Development Academy of the Philippines. The first resource speaker that were invited and followed by the different uh, governors from the autonomous region, from the Bangsa Moro autonomous region in Muslim Mindanao, Province of Magindano, La Ana del Sur, Basilan, Sulu, and Tawi-Tawi. They sent representative to, to be, to, to attend the public consultations. And we, the panels, Mr. Speaker, also invited the different LGUs, mayors, and barangays, Ligo, uh, municipal mayors, and Ligo barangays to give and share their comments and recommendations to the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code. Uh, Mr. Speaker, we also invited uh, different civil society organizations and as well as uh, the members of the akadem to give their views, to give their comments and recommendations, suggestions to the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code. In total, Mr. Speaker, the public consultation, although all these consultations were done through Zoom, it is very success, it was very successful, Mr. Speaker. And thereafter, Mr. Speaker, we conducted, uh, we uh, discussed and deliberate this matter in the Committee on Rules in the last week of November 2020, uh, consolidating all the comments and recommendations from the stakeholders as well as those from the members of the Parliament. The Chairman of the Committee, MP Attorney Raisa Jajuri, were able to consolidate all the comments and made a presentation on the uh, proposed Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code. We uh, discussed and deliberated for almost four uh, days, separate uh, days, until uh, on November, on January 25, uh, 26, January 26, Tuesday, we approved this uh, Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code on, on committee level and we submitted to the plenary for approval, uh, Mr. Speaker. So that now we are now, the Committee on Rules are now with the plenary to report back the committee report number 53 and uh, and we are appealing to the members of this August body to immediately approve the Bangsa Moro Civil Service Code or the Cabinet Bill Number 59. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a motion to adopt and approve the committee report for deliberation. Uh, duly seconded, is there any objection, same is hereby approved. The deliberation of the Civil Service Code will take place in the next session.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn the session next to the next.
Before we adjourn, there is a call from the speaker. For all able, all those who can attend physically, in the next session, we need to increase so that we can, uh, we intend to deliberate on the Civil Service Code and possibly consider the Education Code. These are some of the priority codes that we are mandated to pass as member of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. So, including those in the Zoom, we call for your understanding and cooperation if you can possibly come down and join us here. Uh, your, you can fill this room with your eloquence, uh, in terms of this deliberation. So thank you very much, the session is hereby adjourned.